Okay, so I am starting the recording and calling the meeting to order at 6:33 PM. And the first item on the agenda is actually to accept the agenda, but we'll amend it if we need any amendments. Does anyone have any amendments to suggest? I do have one as a matter of fact.
I assume that yours is mine, so I'll let you go first.
The budget, I suppose that's part of the treasurer's report.
Which is part of-
Right. Yeah, and I have one thing I'd like to bring up. I don't know if that has to be new business point now. It's probably something I'd want to discuss at the next meeting maybe. But it's about the conservation developments and if we should change some of the wording in our conservation development language.
Is it about the conservation development?
Not about the specific one, but it follows out of that. Should we try to change?
I'm going to just stop you there and I want to make a suggestion for our meeting. Some of you might not know, I suspect that most of you do, that the town is being sued by the citizens group. Which means that all of our meetings are most likely going to be examined and subpoenaed for part of the record there. So I would suggest very strongly that we not discuss unless there really is a significant reason that something should come up, that there is actual business before the Conservation Commission. I would suggest that we not discuss it and then in accordance with our discussion at our last meeting, at that point, I would ask Liddy to recuse and I will recuse and Melissa will also recuse.
Well, then maybe in the future when the litigation is over, but I like to propose some changes to the
Connie, have we had-
Regulations that we have.
So like I said, if it's actual business that should be before the commission, not just, you know, or point of discussing it, if it's something that you really believe should be discussed within our commission, Yose, then you add that to the agenda, knowing that it will very likely be part of the record of the litigation and thinking about what your role is in the town as being part of this commission. And three members that are on this call right now will immediately refuse and not be part of that discussion. So I ask you to think about that.
Yeah, well, then it's probably not worthwhile.
We don't have a quorum, so we can't discuss it.
Yeah, I'll postpone it till next year sometime.
I just had one question, which doesn't change anything, but has the lawsuit actually started?
Yes, it was filed on December 2.
And then the other thing is that I believe without a quorum, anything can be discussed, it just can't be voted on.
There was discussion about that actually at the last selectmen's meeting and I think that there will be further discussion on that.
It doesn't really change anything right now, though. I was just, you know, we could say-
Probably that will not be the case, that you probably cannot have any discussion, but I guess we'll wait till the selectmen make a decision on that.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
I should probably mention that while I am not part of the formal lawsuit, I certainly am part of that group. I don't know, so what do you want to do with me as well?
I think that-
We'll talk about anything.
Wendy, then you would also recuse. So that would be, you know, a disclosure that you would want to make at the time and then you would just recuse as well.
Just a clarification again, does the lawsuit have specific names?
The parties involved in the lawsuit are
Are.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, the Concerned Citizens Group, and I'm not entirely positive of the name, Liddy, so you can correct me and clarify if you want, and the applicant and Paul Samansky. So you can find information about that. It's been reported in the Republican American. And you can also find, you know, you can probably find yourself a copy of the claim, but I would suggest, I would strongly suggest that we don't discuss it in-
I think we've said enough already. Okay, thank you.
However, I do want to add to the agenda under new business, power plants proposed in over. And is that what you had, Melissa?
Yes.
So that's under new business, Connie?
Yes, so that will be six C. Any other amendments to the agenda? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept as amended.
Seconded.
Wendy, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Being on that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to amend if necessary and then accept the minutes of December 15th. I don't know, I hope you've all had an opportunity to review the minutes and are there any changes needed?
Motion to accept as written.
My seconded.
Thanks, Wendy. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Being on the motion carries. So let's move into the treasurer's report. Thank you, Liddy, for sending that round earlier today.
Well, as you can see, there's no activity since the last report. However, so that's that. Then also have the numbers on the COGA fund. We have a total of $10,461 in the COGA fund. And there are two more checks due in from the Kent bookstore because they've been buying them. And I might add that we have 10 left. I had 30 more printed, 20 of them have gone out. Why only have 10? I discussed this later when we get to the trail books, but anyway, that's the situation there. And then, as I sent that message around, we do need to talk about next year's budget. I think we have to think about, you know, do we keep asking for the same stuff over and over again in the hoax that we'll actually be able to spend it? We didn't last year, we will not this year. What's, what, how do you all feel about that?
I personally feel like we're not asking for a whole huge amount of money. We're not asking for an increase, certainly. But that there is still hope that we can do our events in the spring and I feel like we've proven that we can do outside events. So we can do the town cleanup all the way. We can, we can kind of think outside the box and do some other events. I would hope that we'd be able to do the library events, like all of our spring events. There's got to be a way we can do these outside the box and outside.
Well, some of those we can, you're right, but we've got, you know, $1,000 in there for printing and mapping. Are we going to get to that? The open space plan, the NCRI update, update, are we gonna?
Open space plan, I don't see happening, but hopefully the NCRI, I think that's possible, Wendy?
I think- Liddy, if you just clarify, we're discussing the submission for the next year. So that, that year starts June, so in other words, it's not-
It's actually July.
The money that we have for this spring, we already have.
Oh, yes.
And in the past, we've, we've, last year, we graciously gave it back to the town, which we could do if we need to. So I agree with Melissa, I think we should just go ahead and do the same budget again.
Wendy, I mean, Liddy, when, when people look at the budget and they see that you're asking for less and then the following year you ask for a big increase, that puts off some weird red flags than just giving back money. We actually want to do these projects and just because we, we are slowed down by how we meet and other things. I just, I worry about cutting our budget and then wanting it back again in the following fiscal year with different administration.
Okay.
I agree. Keep it the same.
But I just want to clarify, we're not giving the money back to the town. It's just if we don't spend it, it goes back to the town.
Goes back into the surplus, for sure, yeah.
Right, no, it's, we can think that we're being generous, but it's just the way it works.
All right.
At what point do we think we have too much in the COGA fund? I mean, there's another, no other commission has this little slush fund.
Wendy, I think we should be looking at tree planting again in the fall. We, we've been discussing, I mean, there was a discussion on Facebook, on the Kent Community Page about how nice that was when someone posted one of those news articles and then I posted some pictures of us doing it. We did it twice since the newspaper article that that person posted. So I feel like that, yeah, you're right, that we can probably draw down some, but we need to carefully plan that out and we have different partners now, right?
Yeah, and you know what? We can discuss that when we get to the trail books because that is the COGA fund.
Yeah.
If you all want to think about it a little bit before we get there.
That's a great idea.
Okay, all right, so I will submit same budget and I think I'll do, I'll put some comments with it saying basically that we just hope that we can do all these things, but obviously COVID has kept us from doing so. We have, some of the small things we have done, I mean, we did have the cleanup last year. We didn't have the event, I don't know, we did do some of the small stuff. And we certainly should be able to this spring and then hopefully in the following year we'll get back to normal.
Hopefully we can do donuts at the transfer station again.
It's outside, come on, guys.
I know, I think we can.
I think we can too. All right, very good. I will do that, folks, then, with your guidance.
Okay, so-
That's it for the trip.
Do we want to vote on that?
I think we have to have a number in the motion and I think, Liddy, you can make that number in that motion.
All right, I move that we submit a budget for next year, the year starting July 1, 2021, two, sorry, 2022. A budget of $2,495.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Be one, that motion carries. Thank you very much, Liddy, for doing that.
No problem.
Okay, and thanks, Mike. Welcome back. We are on item four of the agenda, which is public comment. We sort of maybe have a member from the public here, in that Donna Hayes has joined our meeting. Donna, I don't know if you're just listening or if you have a comment that you'd like to make at this time.
No, I'm just listening. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item five, which is old business and the primary item for dis-
Yeah, Connie, could I just interrupt for a second? I forgot to mention, you asked me to order some more of the clear bags for the trash bins and I did. So that's, isn't an item on our agenda, but I just want you to know that they're coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so the main item for discussion on our agenda tonight is this ordinance that would enable the town of Kent to purchase open space and other land. And, you know, this is, this is a provision that some towns have and we don't, although it's been mentioned over and over again in POCDs and there have been town talk force looking at it over, you know, more than a decade. So Wendy, I have your name on somebody who was going to prepare for us a report and a recommendation.
Well, excuse me, there's, there's no doubt that I have, well, I have data from, let's see what this source is, it's called Land Acquisition Funds, Municipal Ordinances, Legislation, Land Use, Municipalities, Recreation, General. And this is, I guess, from a government agency. I don't know why it's not spelled out, but it's, it's written by Adam Walkoff, legislative fellow. And it goes into some detail, but this is not a really up-to-date article, but there's no question that, but that this is allowable, that many towns are doing it. I don't yet have, what I wanted to get was a complete list of towns in the northwest corner that have them. I don't have that worked out yet. But we certainly should, should indicate that this is common practice and it's considered good government generally. And I will, you know, and I have a fully made out list of the towns that do and don't. Maybe I should promise that for next time. It's been very hard to find anybody in their offices for the last two months, but.
So you might start with people at the Nature Conservancy, or no, sorry, I'm sorry, the Trust for Public Land.
Yes, I have that information.
About that, welcome, Jean. We, Wendy, I would ask you, if you can, to compile information about that in written format and have that ready for us for next month. And the other part of that inquiry is just an examination of, you know, what you think a good model ordinance might be. And so we had talked about Goshen's as being the most likely candidate, but we weren't certain about that. Definitely, we would want to get a copy of Goshen's ordinance so that we could look at that as well. And so if you remember what we thought our strategy might be in moving forward with an ordinance like this is to, you know, decide on what we would recommend and then seek to loop in and get the support of municipal boards, including planning and zoning and the Board of Selectments, so that we could eventually move that to, to a town meeting. So, so I think that that's, that's our end goal, but our very next step next month would be to have this compilation and the recommendations of what we, you know, what we would want to put forward.
Okay, do we also need to make a specific recommendation to the, the Plan of Conservation and Development? I mean, so that that doesn't get lost in the sauce?
What is the procedure?
So that was part of our discussion last month. What we, I mean, I think there's no question that this will be recommended in the POCD. It always has before and it's, you know, been brought up already again, with this go around. The procedure could be as simple as, you know, us just suggesting a town ordinance, except that we felt pretty strongly that we'd like to have, you know, support from among the town boards and commissions. And so we, we really felt that the interim steps in between the town meeting and us deciding on what the model was, would include outreach to the planning and zoning and to the Board of Selectment after that.
The simple distinction, as, as I've found it, is that some towns have a sep- totally separate open space budget or savings method. Other towns have it as part of, of a collection of monies that can go to a number of things, include not, not only open space. And then the third, of course, is the towns that don't do it at all. But I will, I will get a much further explanation. And I'm going to talk to the retired first selectman of Goshen, who apparently is, you know, still very engaged in this business.
I have the, a copy of the Goshen ordinance here and it says to be used for open space recreation or housing, so that they don't limit it to open space.
Affordable housing is, has been a, often a recipient of these monies too.
We have to decide if we want to do that or if we want to limit it to open space. And we also- But-
Yose, have you looked at other towns besides Goshen? Is there someone that does it just for open space or?
I had, I looked before for Sherman and Sharon and I-
I think Washington, yeah.
So, and Cornwall didn't have any. But, yeah, Sherman and Sharon, they both didn't seem to be spending their money. They had saved some money. And one of them was, had been talking about stopping it altogether, but.
After our last meeting, I, Matt Winter reached out to me and told me to look into Martha's Vineyard Land Bank. And he suggested that their model is a really good one and I think that it's not a town-managed entity and that we should be looking at it for reference.
Let's do so.
They, that state enabling legislation is just something to watch on, something like that. The state of Massachusetts has a completely different conservation regulatory scheme than we do here in Connecticut. So we should just be conscious of anything that might require, you know, something more than a town ordinance. The other piece on a town ordinance, of course, and this is part of our thinking, although not articulated, about, you know, about going to P&amp;Z and about, you know, consulting with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance versus, so we've got to figure out how this thing is funded and, you know, make a recommendation in connection with that as well. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think, even though there's been considerable community support for some time for some kind of a fund like this, that we should just automatically assume that it's a slam dunk if there's going to be an impact to people's pocketbooks. So we should be really, you know, persuasive in the data that we have to share in our case when we're ready to go forward with.
We also have to remember that we've had a number of land acquisition committees, with the last one that was headed by Dennis DePaul, came out with a report. We have to find that report and there were recommendations in there. They spent quite a bit of time on it. And that was a multidisciplinary group, it wasn't just Conservation Commission where other people-
Yose, could you say again? Yose, can you say again who that was? When did that happen?
Dennis DePaul was heading the last one, I think it was, yeah, 2013, 14 or so.
I served on that committee and I have that report.
On the earlier one.
You do have that report.
I do.
I think we have to look carefully at how other towns have handled the piece if affordable housing is enmeshed in with the same kind of, you know, fund, because the, that, you know, that gets very tricky in terms of getting people to support it. So we really need to look to see how, how, how that's done.
Yeah, I think it's also true that in towns that don't have a group like our Affordable Housing Group, which has been very powerful for a long time and very skilled, there's much more of a need for it in those towns because they have nothing to start with. I think here where we have a successful group that runs that business quite well and knows how to raise money and where to go for funds, I think my focus would be on just open space.
Yeah.
I mean, there is a group right now, as you might know, a subcommittee of the town that is meeting on housing needs to create a housing plan and there's a survey out in case, in case you haven't taken it yet. Please do take it. And, you know, for all we know, will be a recommendation coming out about an ordinance that would support that. I don't really think that that is, you know, useful place to bat around right now. I think what we need to know is, how are their towns getting this? What are their ordinances look like? What do we think would fit with our town and then make a plan for engaging, you know, our counterparts?
Yeah, I think we should focus on the open space and, yeah.
Agreed.
And it would be used from a useful, I think from the Board of Selectmen's perspective to have some sort of comparison to look at as far as, you know, towns, maybe in the region that have these ordinances or statewide. And what, how they did their funding, I think that's going to be a, a key piece. How they sort of did the initial funding and then what does that look like over the long? And what the goal is if, and I think, I'm assuming, come down from the states' plan of open space with the, you know, their percentage and what the goal would be overall for open space and how that, how this fund could help address, maintain, support that from, from the, you know, sort of trickle-down theory, I guess, as it is.
Your tech really is choppy tonight, Jean. I think, so I think before you joined, we did talk about Wendy providing a written compilation just as you described, that, you know, talks about other towns in Connecticut that have something like this. I, you know, that would explain how these things are funded and what the different options might be. And it would be helpful, actually, to have your eyes on it before our meeting eventual with the Board of Selectmen comes to pass, because you might be able to anticipate for us what questions we might receive from the select board at that time. So I think we're talking about four months down the line here. But at that point, if we could have your review, that would be really helpful.
Sure, and I think, so obviously we're head, headfirst into budget season now, but I think this action, if you're talking about a four months, four months out for having something to put in front of the, the boards, I think that's actually an okay timeline for the next budget season because these budget seasons come and go so quickly. And I apologize for my connectivity. I was logging in to the meeting at exactly 6:30 and it said the meeting had been ended by the host, so I went back out and went to go back in and then I had no internet connectivity. I still have no internet. I'm off, why, off of cell right now and it's, I don't have great cell service in, in town. Go figure.
Okay, all right, so I think we know where we're going with that and shall we move on in the agenda now?
One question, Wendy, did you talk with North West Hills Council of Governments?
I did.
And do, don't they have a record of what various towns?
I think they, they may have been the ones who sent me this document. I'll have to go back through my notes. I, I know I did speak to them.
Okay.
We can also-
All right.
A question to CCM and they would do some research if you want me to, just let me know. They'll do some research.
We need something in writing to look at at the moment. Because what we've been doing is just circulating discussion for several months now and it's not very productive. So we need a written compilation. If that comes from COG, that's great. CCM, that's terrific too. If anyone else wants to try a hand at putting some information together and sending it to Wendy, that'd be great.
Yeah, Jean, if you know that, that document already exists, please do forward it to me. And Connie, maybe I should look at Dennis DePaul's thing as part of the consideration here.
I don't-
Is he anywhere on the website?
You know, like I said, my information is 11 years old. So that will not bring us up to date with any towns that might have adopted ordinances in the last decade.
No, I just thought I might have to refer to it and say that it was done, just so I know.
I think, I think Wendy should have it, Connie, just so she's got a complete file.
I mean, I have, I have easily 50 documents on this. It is not a new topic for our town. It's about time that we do something about it and that's why I'm being a little pushy right now because I'm kind of tired of talking about it. I think that it's time we actually make a recommendation with an ordinance to the town, put it before them and don't let them drop it again.
Like, it's like the public bathrooms. Remember, they were discussed for, for years, but I just, Connie, is there just a, whatever it was that Dennis put together as a proposal? Not all the other notes, but just a document?
No, there's like just garbage in a file. I mean, so many documents to wade through. It's annoying. If there was, if there was a concise proposal that had been made ever, then I would give it to you. But it wasn't and the last time that the town saw a hide near hair of this was in 2013 when Bruce Adams brought it to the Board of Selectmen and made a proposal that they adopt the Goshen ordinance. and made a proposal that they adopt the Goshen ordinance. And there was some general support and then it just disappeared. So.
Might be interesting to know what Bruce, what Bruce proposed. That would be interesting, I would think.
He proposed that they look at the Goshen statute or Goshen ordinance and adopt one just like it.
Period. Okay.
And it's, I mean, it's there, but then it was no farther and nobody mentioned it at all until, you know, this past year.
Yeah, and he, he never pushed it.
He did push it. He was the only one that pushed it ever. I mean, that's what's remarkable is that when you look back in the records, Bruce Adams was the one that so far has been the strongest advocate for this. So I think that's remarkable, uh, but it's also been a long tunnel, a lot of water under the bridge. We can do better. Let's see if we can. Let's bring it forward. Let's get it done. This is our year. Timing is right. Let's not, you know, let's stop talking about it. Let's just do it.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. And the reason that the agenda appears a little bit differently than it has in the past is that, you know.
For one second, I'm sorry, the, um, the term that I should be using for, um, these, um, ordinances, is there a sort of general term that every, that folks would be familiar with or that they go by? Land acquisition fund?
Open space ordinance, land acquisition fund, sometimes have them without a fund, sometimes just give the town a mechanism to acquire its own space for conservation purposes.
Okay, but land acqui-, open space, those are the terms that I should be using.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Um, okay. So as I was saying, the reason that I kind of rejiggered the agenda a little bit is that I'm really hopeful that our Conservation Commission can focus on action. Uh, and, you know, on doing things that will actually be able to impact our town, uh, as opposed to, um, fuck, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I think there are a lot of items that we talk about each and every meeting, but, uh, don't require action, uh, don't lead to action and that leave us feeling a little bit powerless? Maybe, or maybe that's just me. Um, but I'm hoping that we can move through the updates and really get to discussion that allows us to, you know, uh, use our, you know, all of our, our, our passions, our creative abilities to make an input and make a difference. Uh, I know that there have been many times, uh, in my service on this committee where, you know, we have kind of felt that as a group gelling. And, uh, and I'm sure you can all think of many, um, examples of when that's happened. So I kind of want to seize on those times and, you know, discuss those. Um, but not have a lengthy discussion on some of the items that we may just put on just for a little touch. Uh, but, but not for, um, you know, not for action. Uh, and so that really, um, to me included these items that are next, uh, that are more updates. Uh, you know, if there's more to discuss, we always can, you know, but, um, but that's, that's why that looks that way. Um, and so as far as the P O C D, uh, the next meeting is January twentieth. I don't know if you bookmarked it. It happens to conflict with the town meeting, which isn't optimal.
It's the twenty seventh.
Ah.
They moved it.
Did it get? Okay, that's good to know. Great.
Yeah. So you'll see the agenda on, in the next couple of weeks with all of the attachments, so.
Awesome. Okay. So I hope that, uh, some of you can sign in for that. And again, our, our, you know, as far as action is concerned, our commission decided that we would, uh, you know, wait for a draft to be prepared and, uh, then do a full review and report. Um, sustainable materials management in Kent. Uh, Eugene, you can let us know if there's anything new. Uh, what I'm seeing in the, uh, Regional Recycling Task Force is, you know, such a strong emphasis, which is great, on organics. And I wondered if there's something that our commission can do to help you to launch an organics program this year.
Um, I, I know that Jen Heaton-Jones has been working on something. I, I've been very, very deep in COVID stuff the last few weeks. So if you can give me a couple of days to round back with her, um, I'll catch up with her and shoot you an email to give you an update. I don't, uh, CCS, I haven't met in a, a bit. But I know that they're working on legislation and, um, initiatives through deep in the background.
Okay, thanks. Um, standardized communications of how and when the public can participate in meetings and submit letters. And so, uh, I know that a bunch of you were on that meeting, uh, held in town on F O I, uh, recently. Um, and it seems like it is the way it is, that things are just non-standard. Uh, however, um, Wendy, we can certainly do it for our own commission. If we want to put something on our page about how people might comment to us. What do you think?
Okay. I had a call in just today to, uh, West, Western Connecticut COG. There's a new person there now. I forget her, Janelle is her name or something. Anyway, she, she runs something called a five, uh, fifth, fifth Thursday meetings with, I guess it's an informal, uh, talk where she said she would bring up this question and see if she thought it was of interest as how other towns handle it. And she, she thought it was a good topic to work on. She didn't call me back today, but we spoke about that last month and I was reminding her that, uh, that, that we had talked about it.
I think that's in the midst from our last meeting. Um, so I think that, um, you know, I, I don't really think that it's going to be a quick fix. Uh, I'm wondering if our commission itself should set any kinds of guidelines that we'd like to publish about how people can get in touch with us.
Okay, if that's, if that's, uh, just throw it out and see how they take it. Sure. I mean, we want to know what formats are required, what timing is required and to whom things should be addressed. It's pretty much, and we want that to be clear, clearly posted.
I, yeah, you're mistaking me. How people contact the Conservation Commission? Because it was clear from the FOIA meeting that there is no way to, you know, right now, it, it's not the case that there will ever be some standardized thing across towns or even necessarily within towns. But that each commission can set their own. And I'm wondering if you want to do that as a model and a showing of what you would like to see in the rest of the world.
Uh, who would, would we, would we approach each commission and ask them about it?
No.
Or just offer them something?
No, just, what do we want to say to other people about what they should do when they want to get our attention?
Okay.
Only contribution commission, we can only do for ourselves.
But it could become an example for other commissions.
Okay.
Uh, the other commissions are very different. They're more regulatory, well, not regulatory, so.
It might not, but, but it could be, and this is what we can do. And the other stuff we can't do, we have no influence over it. I mean, maybe in the very long run, if the COG has a conversation about it and if a whole lot of people agree. But what we can do in the context of us together is if we would like to show a mirror to the world about what we think is the right way to go about it, we can do it for ourselves. Do we want to do that? And if so, what are our rules?
Creating your own best practices, really.
Yeah.
Maybe. I don't care. I'm not sold either way. Uh, but if we wanted to do that, we could. Here's a time to come, to discuss it. If it's not going anywhere tonight, we can move on. I just wanted to put it out there since it was on the agenda. And I think we have an answer to what we've been talking about.
I don't think we need to discuss it tonight. If Wendy wants to bring it up in the future meeting, then great. And if not, we actually get back to our, anyone who communicates with us, obviously electronically right now because we're not picking up our mail due to COVID. But we, we typically anytime anyone wants to communicate, we read their communication or we, they talk to us in our meeting and we're, we don't, we're actually pretty open commission, so. I like the idea, Wendy, but I think that if you want to draft something to put on our website, then we can do that. But I don't think we need to take meeting time every single month to discuss it.
I don't want to.
Okay. Okay. Shall we move on?
Moving on.
Okay. ARPA funding, you know, again, this is, um, you take the survey. Does anyone have any questions?
I think everything sounds good from your meetings. Seems like you're progressing well and I think does not need to show up on our agenda in the future.
Well, and what's the timetable on this? When, when is the money to be spent?
So there is a lot of information about that on the town's website, Yo. Uh, and the short answer is that the money must be allocated by December twenty twenty four. The first batch of money. So there's a really long timeframe that we could take. And the hope is that it won't take anywhere as long as that. Uh, okay. Kent Trails, A Hiker's Guide. And so Wendy, you want to talk about the, I mean, not Wendy, sorry, Liv, you want to talk about the ones that we were able to get printed?
We did get those thirty printed. Remember this is the book from twenty twenty. So, uh, it needs to be updated. Um, we do have the funds in Cougar to do so. So I think, Wendy, I don't know how you feel about it, but if we can get going on it, uh, we do need input from the land conservation people. And I'm not sure that I've gotten anything. Remember Connie, you sent something around telling me who was going to do it, but I haven't heard from that person.
Well, we, Antinog was supposed to look at their trails and see if they'd made changes that needed fixing.
Right.
In the text.
Right, but I haven't even seen that the.
Weeks ago. So our last commission meeting was, was only three weeks ago and we've had a couple of holidays in between. So, um, you know, with your permission, uh, you know, we can be hopeful that we'll have more to discuss at the next meeting.
Okay. But I think Wendy and, and you and I need to be sure that we've got some time to do this. Right. Because I only have ten books left.
So where, when, where did those other twenty books go?
Uh, the bookstore. Is it House of Books or Kent Bookstore?
House of Books.
It is House of Books because the invoices that I get from them say Kent Bookstore.
They might be incorporated one way, but they're still using House of Books on their signs and everything.
Okay, good.
Uh, okay. Sustainable C T in, uh, Kent. I went on the website and didn't see a meeting schedule. So I don't know that there was anything new since three weeks ago.
Um, there should be a, um, an agenda up there. Know that, um, Lynn was sending one in for, you know, we're supposed to have a meeting on Friday. But you're right, I don't see it on the website. Um, currently we're working on, um, the community resili-, there's a community resilience building program that, um, Sustainable C T partners with the, the various towns. And right now we're, um, going through, there's a sort of lengthy survey. A lot of it goes back to the hazard mitigation plan that, uh, the COG is, I think it's in the final stages. I think it's gone out to, um, Bima, one already came back and there's just a final couple of things. Um, and Melissa, just, what did you say? Oh, I wonder why it's not on the calendar. That's weird. Um, so that's sort of the main focus right now. Uh, the community resilience building will, it's a progression. So we fill out this survey. Um, then we, the team starts to work with the, um, the consultant on, uh, setting some dates for, uh, workshops with the public. So it's a progression of, um, different activities. And I was just looking for the email and I can't find it. Right. Um, and it will, that will go on into the spring.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thanks. Um, and maybe we'll take a look at the agenda. Sorry, I didn't realize there was a meeting scheduled because of that calendar. Uh, okay. The, um, state, the next item, state legislative news. I don't really think there is any state legislative news. Um, I want to mention for you guys in case you're not, uh, aware of it. Uh, and, and there's no impact on Kent at the moment, but if you're interested in trees, you may want to check into Maria Horn's, uh, social media posting and apprise yourself of what went on at Houstonic Meadows State Park.
Oh.
There's a protest tomorrow. There's a protest tomorrow at Houstonic Meadows.
Is, is that meeting going to be, um, recorded or was it recorded? Just can be posted on like YouTube?
I think the meeting was recorded. I checked on the deep website if I read.
I, I looked and I couldn't find it.
I'm pretty sure it is posted and I'm pretty sure that I saw a link to it from someone's newsletter.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. All right. Let's move into new business. Um, Melissa and I were encouraged to see, uh, you, some of you on the Doug Talley me talk, uh, that, um, that the land trust sponsored, uh, last Saturday. And it made me think that, um, that there probably is stuff that our Conservation Commission could be doing to promote pollinator pathway and the, um, uh, you know, just use of native plants, um, and, and, uh, what that means for biodiversity, uh, among our community. Um, and I, I, you know, I know that, uh, you've heard the presentation that Whitney Troy did, uh, last summer, but I kind of wanted to follow up since it's the outset of the year on your thoughts about, um, you know, whether we had the bandwidth, I guess, to engage in, uh, talking to our community about that, uh, that aspect of conservation and, uh, you know, just get your appetite for, for doing something like that. It seems kind of, uh, you know, ready-made for our group.
In terms of the, uh, pollinator pathways, we've what, given demonstrations, we've, uh, had a book session at the library. How, what, how have we covered this so far?
So are you talking we, uh, from the standpoint of the Kent Land Trust? Cause it, most of the activity has been at this point, you know, through the land trust. But the whole idea of the movement is that it really, you know, should not be owned by any one organization. It should be something that, you know, engenders the, uh, you know, support and participation by partners. And I, 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 you know, I know that, uh, you know, Melissa and I would be thrilled for, you know, other people to, to pick up the, the flag and to begin, uh, you know, reinforcing some of the education, um, and the engagement. And to begin, uh, you know, reinforcing some of the education, um, and the engagement that, that we've been doing around it.
I wonder if the conservation commission would want to join the Kent Land Trust and table at the, um, transfer station in the spring.
On that subject?
Yes. Yeah. On that subject. I mean, Connie and I can talk till our eyes are blue. I mean, we really. Have our spiel down and, and we would love to do that with you all. In an effort to, you hear us, you spread the word. We can cover more territory. We haven't talked to people at the transfer station in that light. And they're definitely different people that go to the transfer station that go, then go to the farmer's market. And we, the conservation commission have definitely used the transfer station in that kind of flavor before for other things. And so maybe you all would want to do that with us.
Carol, did we do a program on butterflies ever? Per se?
Um, not per se, but, um, I mean, the other thing to think about is, um, again, we're being hopeful. That this spring will allow us to have the environment that we can be standing at the transfer station, talking to people. But assuming that that things go well and that we can do that kind of activity. I mean, that's sort of what's holding us back. Um, um. I personally. Yeah.
It's safe. Yes.
Well, I mean, something for the, for the, for the children at the library.
We haven't done, uh, butterflies, um. For, per se, we haven't done, but it wouldn't be butterflies. It would, it would be, you know, it's pollinators. It's native plants. It's really. You know, it's, it's all about that. So I was thinking about that because I was remembering how back in 2012. We, the conservation commission, bought the library his first book. We made sure that they had that in their adult collection. So, but in terms of how you translate. Getting native plants to an, an activity that will be appropriate for children is really going to be a challenge. So, you know, it's not, it's not just a question of talking. It's what can we do with them? So I have been thinking about that.
Have we done bees? Have we done anything?
We did, we did, we did a really good thing on bees.
Cause.
But anyway, but that is, that is.
I'm thinking Chalk and Wood Farm would want to come and do a program for us at the library and they're awesome.
Well, so there's different things. You're suggesting dealing with adults at the transfer station. Which is different from than a library program for children. So we can go in all of those directions. Um, you know, see how it goes. I mean, at this point, um, at the, if, if today, if, if this were spring and this was today. I'm not comfortable standing someplace, talking to people. I can't do that yet. And then I also have to say this spring, um, I have, uh, medical issues and I will not be available a lot either. So that, so I think that the idea is great. It's a question of. Do we have the bandwidth? Who can do this? Who wants to do, jump in and do this? The only thing that I, I did, because you know that I'm, I'm really, um, I'm a fan of his. He's, he's like my hero. Um, when he did the program this summer, you know, through the Mark Twain Library, I mean, that was just, you know. But so all I did in my way of what I could do is I got six people to sign onto the Zoom. I got six of my friends to, to join us. So that's what I did. Um. But I think if we do something at the transfer station, it really has to be planned out so that people walk away with. It's, you know, it's, it's what you, you've been doing at the, the, the farmer's market, Melissa. What you've been doing has been terrific. You just want to have another location is really what you're asking for.
I think there's that, but I also think, because I can do that obviously without. When we talk about bandwidth, obviously Connie and I can make time to do the transfer station sometime in the next couple of months, right? But it's also having other people learn. The spiel, the, the, the talk and, and, and being able to give it to other people, just not just in that context. But like just freely be able to say it. And, and when you learn it, you learn it. And when you're holding the materials and handing it to someone, you look at the materials and you know it and you own it. And, and so.
How many people signed up for the Zoom? How many people did sign up for the Zoom? I couldn't tell.
200 people signed up.
Because there weren't that many, uh, you know, I went scrolling through and then I thought there might be people that didn't.
There were 98 in plus or minus.
There, we put it up on our YouTube channel yesterday and sent out the link to everyone that registered. And far there have been like, you know, 36 views of this YouTube, which is like so promising. I mean, I think that what, what we found and, you know, Melissa, you, you touched on this is that, um. Everyone wants to do the right thing and people love to garden. And I mean, and, and, and so. It's really pretty logical and not that difficult. Once you hear the information. But more people have to hear the information to know what it is we're talking about. And we're not just talking about pollinators. We're not just talking about bees. And, you know.
It's a much broader topic. Yeah.
Yeah. Mike?
Uh, I wonder if some of the lawn space at the town hall could be something other than just routinely mowed. Could there be a, an example pollinator garden right in front of town hall?
So we went and talked to town hall. Luch and I went and talked to town hall and Jean, I left you materials back in the fall. With the hope that you, Rex, someone would reach out, but, um. Yes, Mike, yes. That's what we are hoping.
It's a heck of a lot easier just to mow the lawn over and over again, but it would be pretty, I think, educationally relevant. And a lot of people would see it. So.
As somebody who has too much lawn to mow, I am in favor of mowing less lawn anywhere.
And maybe it's, maybe it's harder easier. Maybe it's not, Mike. I mean, look at Swift. And look at the landscaping in the Kent barns with the natives. I mean, it's. I know a lot went into the planning and the establishment of that. You know, the, I think the eventual goal was something that could take care of itself. And we were, we, we kind of had a similar discussion when the visitor center was new. About what the landscaping should be there and how it should be cared for. So, um, you know, yeah, shrinking the lawn is a big part of, um, of Doug Tolemy's message. And I really liked the way that he presented it as. Think about where you want to, need to walk. And that's where your lawn is. And where you don't need to walk. Get rid of the lawn. Have trees, shrubs, you know, other natives.
So I had a, I attended the garden club meeting. They had one in-person meeting. A couple of months ago and, um. Ended up having a conversation with the president of the garden club. And we did get to talking about the, um, pollinator pathway concept. And I, I think it's a great idea. I, I think it would be great to have a pathway. Possibly, um, at least in the back. It seems there's an obvious spot where the lawn goes up in the back. Where you could create a really nice, um, pathway. It gets plenty of sun. That would give people somewhere to go and. Be and walk around. It would obviously get rid of some of that lawn that, um. Is, feels like it's constantly being mowed. Um, so yeah, I, Melissa.
Part of our hope is that the town would sign up and be on the pathway and make the pledge. That's kind of the first. Review that and make the pledge and, and then, you know, be more aggressive about reclaiming. Or taking away grass, but, but making the pledge first and, and reading it and actually, you know, discussing it with the selectmen is an important step there.
Maybe my, Michael, your suggestion is really excellent. I mean, one of the best ways, if you want to educate people is to have the example and let them see it. So really it's, but if that, but it comes down to somebody doing it and taking care of it. I mean, somebody's got to manage that plot. So.
Yeah. Rather than sitting at the transfer station where there is no pollinator garden, it would seem more meaningful to be sitting next to a pollinator garden.
I think the idea of the transfer station is more about the flow of traffic. The amount of people you see, and I, I assume you don't go to the transfer station as I don't go to the transfer station. But when I've gone to the transfer station, I am always impressed at. How many people make their way through there all weekend? And it's, that's ideally, I mean, it's the same with like sitting at IGA. The amount of people you can talk to in a given Saturday or Sunday is amazing and such a useful tool. So that was my only point there. Yes. There's no place there to make any pollinator progress.
As far as installation, uh, we have the Cougar Fund. We could, um, finance it probably. How about that?
It's the labor. It's not the money.
We could finance that.
Liddy, you're muted.
Well, I mean, you can hire people and, um. I can help too.
Ideally, a garden like that is maintains itself if it's done properly.
Well, eventually it takes quite a bit of work to.
It does take work to set it up, but it should maintain itself afterwards.
You still get a lot of weeds and all that, but, uh.
So could we maybe work with the garden club on the implementation of this?
Yes, we could. I'll, I'll talk to Nancy.
They may be willing to maintain it too.
I think Nancy felt that the garden club was slighted by the way it was handled with the welcome center.
The garden club was a good partner in the presentation at the Kent Memorial Library. So, you know, maybe they would be willing to give it a second go. You know, if, if the motive, if part of the goal, uh, you know, was to, um. You know, keep the pollinator pathway, uh, education going and build that movement. Maybe they would feel more comfortable partnering with the town again.
Well, they. It was.
Jean, we didn't hear you. You got cut out.
Sorry. When I talked with Nancy in the fall, she was definitely enthusiastic. We were, it was a really good conversation.
So I can. Do you still maintain the, um, gardens at the, outside the kindergarten wing?
Who, me?
Yeah.
That, uh, no. No, I think now the, uh, the school, uh, janitors are doing it.
Cause that's certainly a pollinator pathway and should be registered under the, under the, um, program. You did a great job with that and it.
That's only small, small garden. Yeah.
Even along with the outdoor classroom, we did plant all natives there. So.
Can we expand that, um, the outdoor classroom with more plantings around there?
Let's look into it, Yose. Make a proposal.
And certainly the, onto the, um. Arch, we could put, you know, one of the medallions so that it, the kids see it when they go into that space. Do you want to pursue that? We don't have that committee anymore.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah. Otherwise I thought when we get to Arbor Day, if that happens, can bring it up then too.
In the spring, I am going in through the land trust. I am going into the classroom and doing a program on pollinators. Um, and potentially that would be something that we could partner with you personally and, um. Plant some plants there during that pro, program.
Okay.
And yeah, potentially we could, you know, put together a. A pick list at, for the greenhouse and have it paid out of the Cougar Fund or paid out of, you know.
Is there any space around the Kent Shopping Center that Casey could be persuaded to?
I, I have talked to him and he, that is part of the plan there. That, that is a go.
Okay. Um, another thing, I, I know so little about pollinator pathways, but I'm wondering whether there is a perimeter around the Kent Land Trust, uh, community garden. That could be on the outside of it.
We actually did, uh, Whitney, our intern did plant that and the groundhog the next day ate it all. So it was, it was so well thought out and so we, we give Whitney so much credit. And it was quite literally, we planted it for Groundhog's lunch.
That's how you know you're, that your native plants are working though, if they get eaten. If nothing eats it, chances are you haven't planted a native plant. Part of the paradox. Um, I think all of it sounds great. I'm going to do, I'm going to write it up in my minutes. So that, you know, you, you, this is more of the brainstorming session with no, you know, hard and fast decisions. But I really think that our commission, um, can be instrumental in bringing the message out to people. And it's a, it's a thing that is very hopeful and feels good to do.
Melissa, can, can greenhouse maybe also set up a section specifically for native plants?
That has definitely been discussed within, um, various forums and we will work towards making some progress this spring with that.
That's a really great idea.
People want, yeah, want to be able to find and natives, not everybody knows where to find them.
Yeah.
And we also have to advertise the Northwest Conservation District, um, yearly sale in April, I think it is. They sell a lot of natives and the sides of the plants.
I think we do that every year pretty well, um, through our social accounts. So I do remember seeing that we've done that in the past and we will continue to do it for sure.
And if you want to blow those to the, through my email, we can. Letter.
That'd be great. Melissa, can you knock out for when that information comes out from the Northwest Conservation District? And send it to Jean so it can be in her email. It's usually in, um. Uh, you start hearing about it maybe even in March, uh, because it's, it's around the time of, um, of Earth Day. And, uh, and everyone buys plants for Mother's Day. So, you know, that's kind of our window is, is, you know, the mid-March through mid-May.
Yep.
Can I ask a question about the Claire Murphy Trail, uh, and wonder? That could become a pollinator pathway and that way we could write a whole thing in there about.
In the works, in the works. Don't you worry. There is a sign already up and we have started. We have plans. Don't worry. Yes.
This would be a great way to write an S, you know, a description about this whole program in the Kent Trails book. Because we have coverage already.
I'm going to ask you though, to compartmentalize, if you will, uh, between what happens at the land trust and what happens at the conservation commission. Cause definitely as a land trust activity, you know, making sure that that trail is, you know, exemplary in terms of its native plants. And its habitat is, you know, a strong goal of the land trust, but probably not something that the conservation commission, uh, needs to lend a hand in. Um, there are so many ways that, that I think that our two groups can be complementary.
Yeah. I think Wendy just saying, change the trail book to acknowledge that the Kent Land Trust is doing that at the Claire Murphy Walk. That's all.
I think that that is in the process.
Well, it's not in the process in the trail book at the moment.
No, 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 no. It's in the process because there's so much to come with that property that we will be in touch and you will hear about it in meetings. And, and so it's hard to like, as Connie said, divide off that piece because there's so much happening over there.
That's, that's okay. But before. Hang on, before we release the 2022 book, we would like to have that information.
Even if it's, uh, you know, attractions to come, just let us know. So we don't have to redo that page again.
You have to hear first. In 2022, you will probably publish that book with the trail map, the way that it stands now. But your next edition of the Trails book.
I'll be dead by then.
Wait a minute, Connie. Wait a minute.
There, there's some really good stuff coming, Liddy, and, and.
I just had one.
Another version. No.
I had one, uh, comment. Um, I know that the library has, uh, the nature's best oak. I don't believe they, they have the nature of oaks yet. And I was assuming that either Connie or, I know that, yeah, either Connie or Melissa was going to talk to Sarah. Cause I, I was going to call her, but I, I figured you already told her that that should be something that they should buy.
We have not done that. I can do that. We partnered with the House of Books and so it's in stock at House of Books. Um, and, and so they had it, they have copies of it and I just had it.
I don't, I don't think it's the, uh, I think that's, I think Sarah has a budget and she can buy books. I don't think that's the problem. But I just didn't want to overstep my bounds if I thought that one of you was going to contact her about it. But, uh, I just didn't want to overstep my bounds if I thought that one of you was going to contact her about it. Otherwise I'm always talking to her about books, as you know. So just someone should tell Sarah that the library needs to have that book.
I, I would, I will tell Sarah and then if you can follow it up with telling Sarah and that way it'll actually get purchased because two people have requested it, okay?
Great.
And I think it's actually there are three, uh, he has four books in total. So, you know.
He has two bestsellers.
We know that they have because we bought it for them. There's, you know, the one about the oaks, uh, there's.
Just the book for Dr. Dark?
Uh, yeah.
All right, well, you know what? It'll get taken care of. We don't have to spend more time. We'll, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Moving on.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Uh, are we good with pollinator pathway and native plants for now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks everyone. Kent Housing Survey, this is a quickie, please take it. That's all.
The, the link wasn't working when I tried.
It worked for me.
Worked for me. Where did you pull the link from? Where did you pull the link from?
Um, that came with our meeting, I think. And, and I went to the town website also and neither one was working.
Was our purpose of having it on our agenda just to make sure that we're all aware, but at this point it's not conservation business. There's nothing in it now that's, okay, just wanted to clarify. Okay, fine.
It's just, it's just a way of reaching more of you as residents to ask you.
Okay, fine.
Moving on.
And then C is power plants in Dover. Uh, and this is to make sure that you're aware, uh, that, um, it was posted on Facebook that there are two power plants planned at the site of Cricket Valley.
Across the street. Across.
New, new extra plants?
Yes.
And, and they're the same company?
And is this across the road where all those solar panels are?
I'm looking.
I would have put the link to the article, but this came up in the last day.
So are these by the same company?
Hold on.
Melissa, can you link us to the article?
I am doing my best. Hold on.
There was some discussion, there was discussion that they're not power plants, they're substations. But that doesn't mean that the public shouldn't be aware that it's happening. But it's not, it doesn't appear to be the same thing as a power plant giving off, um, effluent. So it's not clear right now and the person was just asking people to become aware and sign a petition. And, um, you know, again, it, it just came out a couple of days ago.
Did they own that land already? Or was it, is that their land?
I was not aware of that, no.
I don't know.
All right, so I just posted the post from social where people discuss and then the petition.
And our, our point at this time was really just to share that information out. You know, certainly the Western Clean Air Action, uh, group should be aware of it. I think they probably are careful viewer. Uh, and, um, if there is, you know, ever a point where our Conservation Commission should be involved, you know, bring us back into that. But we wanted to make sure that that news was known.
Thank you.
Melissa, could you email me that?
Yes.
Me too, yeah, I, I couldn't get it all written down.
If you open it now in a browser window, it'll be there when you're.
But it's not on my screen anymore. It's gone.
That, so Wendy, hover over the chat in the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. You can open it up and you can always access anything that was chatted in the duration of them.
Connie, was there, um, ever any, um, publicly consumable data out of all their monitoring stations that were put up?
I, I would direct you to Mike, Carol and Wendy, who know an awful lot, who were heavily involved in the Western Clean Air Action, uh, Committee and who can provide you with a full report as has been done, uh, within this committee setting for many, many, many months. Um, but yeah, there's a lot. So I, I think what you should do is connect with them offline.
Okay, I didn't see it in any Conservation Commission minutes.
We purposely made a separate group that wasn't a town commission so that we didn't have to warn meetings, the whole nine yards, like we thought about this very carefully. And so Mike and Carol and Wendy are part of the Western Connecticut Clean Air.
Right, I thought, um, there were, there was a report that would, that was minutes, but I didn't see one anywhere.
I don't think that there was a report published. But I think that you can talk, find out what you need to know.
Very brief response, uh, awaiting a more comprehensive report.
Oh, still, okay. Thanks.
Okay, but Mike, as you see, I'm pretty sure there is a comment in there from a previous selectman saying, where is the report for that?
Um, okay, I, is there anything else before we adjourn for the evening? Thank you very much.
Does anybody still ever have to check the, uh, mail at the town hall that was mentioned earlier? Mail does not pick up. Shouldn't somebody at least once a year check?
Once a year, we can check the mailbox. Oh, Jean's gonna bring us so that we can all check.
Click in our mail.
I can find the mailbox. Cut it down towards the bottom.
Yeah.
You, you do have some mail.
All right.
There are a number of things. Do you want me to package them all up and send them to someone or would someone like to pick them up? Okay, I'm gonna leave them right in the box then. It does look like there is some, like true mail.
Okay.
Very urgent problem though.
Full of FedEx envelopes.
Prior to yesterday evening. So I apologize on my end, thank you for the reminder. Uh, and even if I had remembered, I, I don't think that I would have gone to town hall yesterday, but I can now.
Well, Connie, um, if you're coming to the pod tomorrow night, I will make sure that we put it in your car with your masks. The mask.
The mask pickup. I don't know what pod was talking about, but mask pickup, I translate.
Guys would have picked up on my acronym.
Yeah, I will, I want to see, I have like four Zooms scheduled tomorrow, so it's a lot. But there might be another vehicle from my family, uh, attending that pickup. So, um, thank you for arranging it. And, uh, I will, um, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I shall move.
Melissa and Wendy. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-two PM.
I know.